Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting, City Council, Monday, October 24, 2022. I would first await a motion to exit non-public and to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we'll take a roll call for tonight's meeting.
Mayor McEckern?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Councillor Taber?
Here.
Councillor Denton?
Here.
Councillor Moreau?
Here.
Councillor Bagley?
Here.
Councillor Lombardi?
Here.
Councillor Blaylock?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Here.
Thank you, Kelly. For those watching at home, we had some strobing light issues. It's not a Halloween thing. We're keeping the lights low here. But for the invocation, I'd like to ask Councillor Denton to speak on the upcoming Veterans Day celebrations.
Thank you, Your Honor. So for people who do not know, Veterans Day is on November 11th. It's going to be the second Friday of the month in November. The Central Veterans Committee, which is made up of the American Legion, the VFW, the Marine Corps League, will be hosting the annual Veterans Day ceremony at 11 o'clock in Goodwin Park. The ceremony itself is usually relatively short. I had asked, and he had accepted, to be our keynote speaker. That's Major General David Michalides, who is both a Portsmouth resident and the adjutant general of the New Hampshire National Guard. And for anyone who doesn't know what that means, it means he's the top uniformed officer of the National Guard in New Hampshire. And after the ceremony, many of us go to the American Legion to celebrate. So if you're able to attend on Friday, November 11, 11 o'clock in Goodwin Park, it'd be great to have you there. And if you're not able to attend that event or any event for Veterans Day, just simply thank a veteran for their service on that day or any day. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Josh, for your service, and Councillor Lombardi, for your service. With that, I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to accept, but as always, Kelly, thank you for your diligent work on preparing those. No recognitions of volunteer and committee reports. And next up, we have public comment. So before we speak tonight on public comment, I'd just like to, we're going to have a discussion on public comment a little later on. I strongly believe in public comment. I think it's incredibly important to be able to speak to your government and your elected officials. I would ask, as much as is possible, to be respectful in the comments that you make, and to speak with the respect that, you know, not myself, but this chamber deserves. It's incredibly hard to sit here, and it's my job as chair, with the gavel, to decide when people cross the line and get into personal attacks. And to be honest, most of the time, I err on the side of probably too much, because I like to imagine that we all come looking to make a better government together. So when we get up to speak, you know, if there are personal attacks, I would ask that you direct them to me as the chair, rather than the rest of the council doesn't have the gavel, and certainly not to staff. The only person that works for us in the council is the city manager, and the rest of the staff, they work for her. And so when we do that, it just doesn't create the type of atmosphere that I think that we want to be proud of. You have a privilege to speak, a privilege that was started with former Assistant Mayor Jim Splain. I believe it's a good one. But I'd ask that you respect the hall when we're speaking, so that we can move forward and create a better government and honor the city that we all love. So with that, we have up first Nicole LaPierre with the topic of the neighborhood parking program.
That's a hard statement to follow.
Oh, sorry, and that wasn't directed to anything.
No, no, I know. I just.
But feel free to come at me as much as you want.
I feel bad. I am more than cognizant of the fact that the work you do is hard and without thanks, often without any thanks, and long hours. So I appreciate that. And I also work for a municipality, so I do as well feel for the people who are employed by the city. So thank you. And it's disappointing to hear that you have to even say that. But back to, I guess, the matter at hand. So again, I am Nicole LaPierre. I live at 44 Rock Street. I missed the last PTS meeting due to its 8:30 timing. It's difficult if you work. It's a hard time to get there. I had hoped to go. Regarding the data for the NPP, previous, and I don't know if everyone knows this, previous pre-pandemic data was collected by a survey of the neighborhood, and it did 100% show that the majority of residents were in favor of the parking program. And I believe Councillor Bagley, I'm not at 100%, might have that information, and if so, I'd encourage him to share it with the group, or maybe there's some way we could get it to councillors that are new and weren't on the council or working for the city at the time that effort was made. Because it paints part of an important picture. So the issue regarding the recent data we have been hearing so much about is that it was collected during the pandemic, and I see the problem as it skews that data and fails to give a clear picture of what people experienced before. So as people are returning to restaurants, just what feels like recently anyways, returning to restaurants and places of business, et cetera, without a program, I feel like we're going to be right back where we started off, pre-pandemic. I also believe there is absolutely a correlation between the announcement of the pilot and people taking advantage of the workers' rates in Foundry Garage. So when the pilot ends, and if nothing else is in its place, the people paying to park will leave the garage and return to the streets. And I think that because, for example, if you work in hospitality, the hospitality industry with the price of inflation right now, I mean groceries alone, why wouldn't you save yourself that money? And so the city, in my opinion, needs proactive governing. And with continued development, for example, the stady micro-apartments and the Deer Street Associates planning residential development, the problem is sure to compound even more and be an even bigger issue. And there is very little off-street parking planned for those two developments. And where will all these new people park? The way the Foundry was bonded, sadly bonded, the developers cannot buy spots. It has to be individuals. So there is, in my opinion, zero incentive for those new residents to bypasses, because if I've learned one thing living in Islington Creek, it's that if you can park for free, you park for free. So the congestion of those developments alone will once again push this to the forefront. Parking programs are used all over the country. It's not a novel idea or an unreasonable one. Okay, just very quickly, in my opinion, the NPP did work. It was successful in its intent, making a neighborhood a neighborhood again. And the problem has been solved. I really would be regretful to see it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up is Michelle Worth on the topic of the Neighborhood Parking Plan Program.
Good evening, Michelle Worth, 439 Hanover Street. Also speaking about the Neighborhood Parking Program. Several years ago, before the pandemic, a group of neighbors got together and wanted to start a parking program, because even though they lived on the edge of downtown Portsmouth, they were frustrated that they couldn't have the parking space right in front of their house. The city mandated they find a, they get 75% of the neighbors in order to sign on to the pilot, in order to run it. They could not do that. They did not get 75%. We didn't want it. But through all of the strangeness of the pandemic, they did manage to finally push through their pilot program. The studies, the original studies, show that the parking situation in our neighborhood does not meet the criteria that the parking department would usually use to make a parking program. It currently has lowered than that threshold. After the city has spent more than $100,000 to measure the parking in the lot, the, please listen very carefully to Mr. Fletcher as he presents the findings. I believe it was only a 2%, 2 or 3 parking spaces regained. That's all it was for the price of $100,000. This is not an appropriate use of city tax money, of my tax money. It has been suggested that each of the neighbors be charged a fee in order to park in our own neighborhood, after we've already paid taxes to create the streets. And for all of the inclusion and equity talk of the council, it is not right, in our neighborhood with all of the apartments that we have, to allow my affluent neighbors, who all have single-family homes and driveways, to park for free, while all of my neighbors that live in apartments all have to pay a fee to park in the street. And that's not right, to charge extra fees and taxes to the poorer people of our community. It's not right. We talk about equity. So please be very careful to pay attention to the numbers and understand that this program costs a lot of money and makes no significant difference to the parking in our neighborhood. Please vote no on the parking program.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up is Esther Kennedy, the topics of Audit Committee and Rule 43. Oh, Esther's not here. Okay. Next up is Petra Huda on Audit Committee and Rule 43.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Petra Huda, 280 South Street. So I'm here to talk to you about the Audit Committee, again. Seems you have run out of the audit options to keep the old city management hold on the audit process. The Audit Committee was challenged every step of the way, not having information available for meetings, fostering the staff taking control over the Audit Committee process, then compromising the process last year by engaging with proposers during the election process and attempting to put the blame on the Audit Committee Chair by abstaining from a required vote. This year, after the Audit Committee spent two years updating, evaluating, and voting on an RFP, the staff was allowed to disregard the whole RFP and then post a staff RFP, without even a final review by the Audit Committee. Good governance. The Governance Committee attempted to change the Audit Members' terms, failing on that. Then Councillor Cook and Taber proposed removing the independent financial experts totally, when that was met with strong resident and taxpayer resistance. Now we come to this. Now you're attempting to put another non-financial city councillor on the Audit Committee. You're making an unprecedented change to only the ordinance, only this Audit Committee ordinance, by dictating that a city councillor shall be appointed by the mayor to be chair, unlike any other committee that chose their own chairman. Why the Audit Committee only? As a resident and taxpayer of Portsmouth, who you as a city councillor report to, why do you continue the blatant assault on the Audit Committee and its chair? As mayor and councillors, please ask yourself, does this change remove the most qualified and duly-appointed person as Audit Committee Chair and replace him with a city councillor with little or no experience in the audit process, serve the residents and taxpayers best? Or does this just another political move, as described by councillors Lombardi and Taber, to influence the real financial status of the city? This process also begs the question, does dictating by ordinance that the chair of only the Audit Committee best serve the people of Portsmouth, now and into the future? Or is this council just putting a rubber stamp on the city management directive? Will you be dictating that other boards and committees have a city councillor on their chair? A lot of the other committees, i.e. trustees of the trust, handle a lot of money, advise you on a lot of money. There's not a councillor on there. Are you going to dictate that that goes on there, too? So I ask you, please think about what you're doing here tonight. It is setting a precedent, and it's not just you. It's all councils into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next up is Chris White on the subject of the Audit Committee.
Good evening. I'm Chris White, currently Chair of the Audit Committee. I live at 28 Porter Street. Thank you, Mayor McEckern, and City Councillors, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. There was some confusion regarding the Audit Committee at the last City Council meeting. Two matters seem to arise. Why do we need an Audit Committee when the city has a AAA rating? And secondly, there are only two auditing firms available to us in New Hampshire. Both are an error. The AAA rating pertains only to the issuance of bonds. The rating agency's work is quite cursory, especially when compared with the work of the auditors. But the rating agencies don't look at the underlying auditing issues of risk management and internal controls. This entails a far more rigorous examination of the city's finances. The Audit Committee is essential for the procurement of these services. No less than the U.S. Government Accountability Office, the USGAO, and our own Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, recommend that municipalities establish and use Audit Committees. When should Audit Committees be reaffirmed or established? I recommend that now is the time, so that our AAA rating might be better protected. Secondly, there are far more than two auditing firms available in New Hampshire. There are two which are domiciled in New Hampshire, Melanson and Plazek and Sanderson, but there are many more that have their regional headquarters in New England and are licensed to do business in New Hampshire. We had one of these bid on last year's RFP. Now to the new ordinance. By passing this ordinance, you further reduce the Audit Committee's independence. Why not leave well enough alone? You have an Audit Committee where experience and sound financial judgment informs its work and its recommendations to you. You can take the recommendations or leave it. What more do you want? With your proposed changes, the Audit Committee becomes political, always looking over its shoulder to see what the council might say. That clouds the judgment of what should be a technical decision. By doing this, you've lost plausible deniability, because you can't just blame the Audit Committee the way you did earlier this year. You will be on the hook for process violations, such as what occurred even this last Friday, when in public session, again, Councillor Taber divulged non-public information regarding how many proposals the city had received in response to the latest RFP. As the current chair, I cannot tell you that we have found any specific examples of fraud. But I can tell you, we have observed the city ignoring its own internal controls. This loss of internal controls should be of direct concern to you, because without robust internal controls, the guardrails for sound financial management and budgetary practice have been removed. Fraud is the stepchild of such behavior, and with this new ordinance, you have provided the grease to make this happen more easily. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman White. Next up is Sue Polidora on the topic of the Audit Committee, the Audit Ordinance.
Hi, good evening. Sue Polidora, Middle Street, Portsmouth, and I'm here to talk about the ordinance that you're going to be voting on tonight. Now, that ordinance has been read, this is supposed to be the third reading of it. It has been changed every single time it has been read, and not by little. It's been changed considerably. So it's no longer that original ordinance that was proposed. And then, the public comments were closed, so you have not heard, you have not allocated time for a public hearing to go with it. This is totally, how can you say that you're going to have three readings on an ordinance that was changed on the last meeting, and the meeting before that, and the meeting before that, is not the same? I urge you to stop this. Just leave things the way they are. This ordinance doesn't look to me like it was appropriately handled or voted on. Every time you change something, that considerably should go back to the first reading. It should be starting the process all over again. I mean, you know that. I'm not telling you something that is new. Everybody here considered them to be very smart. So I have reviewed all of the videos, and there was a time that everybody was so confused, nobody really knew what they were voting on. You know that. You were here. You know, I watched it, I'd watch it, and I'm like, I'm confused. I don't know what it is. So if you are not sure, please do not vote on this tonight. Please shelve it. Come back with the new ordinance if you have to. Follow the process, and make sure it is what you want it to be the first time around, so you don't have to change it every single time. The point that we don't know what we're really voting on are the consequences of it. That's my request. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Next up is Paige Trace, on the topic Portsmouth.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I promise this will be cordial. There will be no one maligned, no one personally spoken of. The city works on an issue of trust, trust between the residents and the city council, trust between the city council and the residents. When the residents are told that a drawing will be included that won't change, everything's agreed upon, and suddenly the drawing is different, and the residents have trusted the city council, that's where the issues of trust come in. And I realize that we're all overworked, and we all spend long hours. But currently, the documents that are in the agenda are changed, not by intent, but they are changed in the height of the zoning regulations. Nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s were promised that there would be no zoning changes in height, particularly the Moffett Ladh House and Garden. And unfortunately, there is a change at the top of the garden. And I'm hoping that this was simply oversight. It's not the only 501(c)(3) that has an issue at the moment. So I am hoping that we can all work together, nonprofits, city council, members of Portsmouth, members of staff, everyone can work together, and we can work as a trusting community. And I thank you very much all for your time.
Thank you, Paige.
Good night.
Good night. We'll go back. I saw Esther come in the room. Esther, you are speaking, or propose to speak on the topic of Audit Committee and Rule 43.
Sorry, everyone, for being late. Esther Kennedy, 41, Pickering Ave., doing my own budget at the school. So I'm here tonight to talk about the potential of Rule 43 coming forward. And I hear many of you speak about transparency. So I guess I'm hoping that Rule 43 that Mr. Bagley is coming forward with will give more opportunities for public speaking and not less. But I also want to throw in there, the Audit Committee, people have been talking about it, nice job. But again, it's getting the citizens involved. It's having them come to the table. I'm not sure what the need was to change the Audit Committee. I thought it was a great procedure. I do agree with Ms. Polidora that it has been manipulated many times since the second reading, when we had an opportunity to speak as a public. So I asked Attorney Merrill if it was substantially changed, which I believe it was, from the time we had our public hearing. So in having public comment, I would hope that we would go back and have a second public hearing on that. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the CIP Committee that's under Mayor McEckern's name. I have to ask, why are we putting that down? Is it because in the Land Use Board, Ms. Merrill and the city manager, Council Merrill and the city manager, were talking about having a CIP Committee? Is it because we want to do it at 10 o'clock in the morning and not at the evening? The Planning Board has a process, folks. It has public comment. It has allowed time. It's after-work hours, and they have a really good process. I would be saddened to see that the city come up with a new committee that has people that are assigned to it, quote unquote, that really aren't vetted by the public to put on it. It's our friends and neighbors and the people that might be wanting to have more development, which you all know I'm not for, might be having different values and norms, and that I don't have an opportunity to speak. And then this committee comes to the Planning Board and says at the Planning Board, we have public input. I guess I would ask you all to really look at our CIP process. It's a good process. It goes in front of the Planning Board, and they get to make a decision, and then it comes to you, and you get to make a decision. During that time, I usually get an opportunity to speak three times at least. So I would encourage you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Going to the Zoom, I see one hand, Mr. Ken Goldman.
Okay, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Ken.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Excuse me. I'm going to talk to you tonight about the Neighborhood Parking Program in Islington Creek. First, I'd like to mention that survey that was mentioned earlier. It was a flawed survey. There was no question, do you like the program? Do you not like the program? It was like, what do you like about the program? So it was changed later on, but at that point, a lot of people responded. So the results are really suspect. Okay. So I've spoken and written to you about this many times, and I'm going to, so you've heard a lot of this stuff before, but I'm going to go again. Okay, this was initially a six-month pilot program, which has now lasted more than a year. Pilot programs are tests for feasibility. Pilot programs are tests or feasibility studies and are not intended to be permanent. One pilot program option is always to discontinue the program based on the results. The Parking Department's data on the NPP has consistently shown that the program was neither necessary or effective. This was born of anecdotes, not data. The, in the, if you look at your notes for the meeting, the Parking Department says, "Parking industry best practices suggest mitigation measures be explored when OXP reaches 85% or above," while Islington Creek neighborhood has for years, for years, not exceeded 75%. Since the data indicates that the NPP is neither necessary nor effective, it should be ended. If the NPP is ended, there is no cost to the city, and therefore, no need to charge for parking in Islington Creek. Muted parking using the Park Mobile app would be inconvenient and expensive for some residents, people working at houses, and visitors, especially overnight visitors. Going forwards, everyone who parks in the neighborhood would need to download the Park Mobile app and set up an account, with visitors and workers, the costs could quickly mount up, and why would we do that? And here are some questions I asked you before in an email, and I'd like to repeat. Does Islington Creek have the most severe parking problem of all the neighborhoods in the city of Portsmouth? If not, why would you consider imposing the cost and continued inconvenience of this program on the residents of this neighborhood? Is there any compelling reason, any compelling reason, to have an NPP or muted parking in Islington Creek? And why would you continue to single out Islington Creek for a neighborhood parking program, and now potentially muted parking, despite the data presented by the Parking Department consistently showing that the NPP is not necessary and has been ineffective? I do not understand the reason why there's potentially a proposal to replace the NPP for muted parking. I understand the program is expensive to implement, but if there is no program, there is no cost to the city. The city does not want to bear the cost of the Islington Creek NPP, and neither do I. Why should we pay for a program that the Parking Department's data has consistently shown to be neither necessary nor effective? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. No other hands and no other speakers? Oh, sure, yep. Zalita, come forward.
Thanks for allowing me to speak, Zalita Morgan, Richards Avenue. Councillors, I would like to speak tonight about, one, CIP. I don't know what the mayor is going to propose, what the announcement's going to be, but I think we all need to keep in mind that the CIP process has, is regulated, they follow RSA, and I want to make sure that whatever is proposed is not going to create conflict or compete with the duties of our Planning Board in executing the CIP process. And it's not going to create, like, a burden in another 10:00 in the morning meeting, right? I want to speak about the Audit Committee. When I was here last, and it was a late night, you were going to make one revision with two councillors, and that was going to be brought, and it seems that all things have evolved, evolved, evolved. So, it really, I'm surprised. So I raised the question about your process. What is it that you are trying to accomplish? It was very simple, an Audit Committee, like any other committee, right? To bring recommendations to you, for you to decide, make your decisions, and suddenly, this committee has become, you know, historically, one thing over the other. We have three residents, highly capable, competent, experts in the field. They are here to serve our community, and I would expect to be, they to be honored. It's an honor for us to have such expertise representing us. And I don't see a reason why this committee would be, in a way, singled out, to have one council, one of you, to chair the committee. It seems odd. And again, it raises questions about your own process, and I think you're not, you're not giving clarity, really. It seems to be a power control, and not really an efficient process of, here it is, we have these, this is information, RFPs, you vote, and move on, right? But clearly, having the same company for 27 years is not okay. And on the Rule 43, or 53, I can't remember, I'm a strong advocate of public comments. I have sat where you are, and I have seen many different behaviors. But I have to say, I've never seen a behavior like last year at the outgoing council, you know, like people saying things through Zoom meetings that were, I'm sorry, through Zoom meetings that really obnoxious, telling the outgoing council to, you know, suck it up, or say, someone's hysterically screaming like things about, you know, "I did not vote for you," whatever the case might be. I mean, you go on, right? You go on. You've got to, you've got to protect the space. This is a space the residents have to come and speak with you, and speak their minds. Sometimes we are not going to enjoy, sometimes we are not going to like it. But nonetheless, there is always a lesson for us, for you sitting there, as you listen to your constituents. Maybe there is a clarification that you owe to the community, maybe there is a learning on that to take from that. So I really would like you to be cautious about it, thoughtful, above all, conscientious, that this is a privilege, a privilege and a responsibility and a duty, and it's our right, and you should not infringe on that.
Thank you, Zalita.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Mayor, you have one more person in the audience raising their hand.
Oh, come on up, Craig. I think that's Craig, the beautiful white hair, I can tell even with the lights dim back here.
That's me, you can see me coming. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Craig Welch. Next week, I'll celebrate my 10th year as the Executive Director of the Portsmouth Housing Authority, and I'm really proud to be in this role in such a great city and working with all of you. Over the past several months, our board and staff have been working on a housing needs assessment that, for the city of Portsmouth, with the idea of getting an idea about population growth and future housing trends, and we recently released that report, and I'm just here to give you a copy, a paper copy of that, and encourage you to look through it. I think the, obviously, the biggest finding is that we've underbuilt housing in this city for some time, the result being that we've had a dramatic increase in rents over the years. This is not a problem that's exclusive to Portsmouth, but is going on around the country. But I think here in Portsmouth, with our creative energy and our collective effort, that we can do something about it, and continue to add to the supply of affordable housing here in the city. Also, we are celebrating the completion of Ruth Lou and Griffin Place, as you know. This was many years in the making. A lot of people say that nothing ever gets done, nothing ever happens around affordable housing, but we've got a 50,000-square-foot building downtown that's now housing 93 people that proves that we actually are making progress. Ruth's Place is the largest expansion of permanently affordable housing in the city of Portsmouth in almost a half a century. We worked very hard to do it, and took a lot of help from the community and city staff and our elected leaders. I just thought, for your interest, you might like to know that the final census at Ruth's Place, like I said, 93 people. We do have seven city employees that are living there, four from the School Department, several from nonprofits like Seacoast Community Schools, Seacoast Repertory Theater, Chase Home, I Got Bridge, and others, three separate hair salons, a couple grocery stores, six restaurants, and four hotels. There's also 21 children living at Ruth's Place right now, and when you think about it, it's really spectacular place to live. The big data point there, though, is not for the people that are living there, it's for the 270 people that remain on the waitlist for Ruth's Place. So while the 64 units there were celebrating, there's a significant demand for more. One of the things in the housing study, the most notable, one of the most notable things is that, not just that there's a demand for housing, but the people who are already in Portsmouth are severely cost-burdened. There's a huge percentage of people that are paying more than 30% of their income and rent, and there's 15% of people in Portsmouth that are actually spending more than 50% of their income and rent, which is really debilitating. So a lot of times, we're talking about housing from people moving inside, but there's a lot of people who are here that are severely cost-burdened anyway. There's a lot of effort, and we've talked to many of you about adding to the supply and what the city can do to help, and our board and our staff are standing by and ready to go on our next development, so we'd be delighted to continue to work with you. Thank you.
Craig, oh, please.
Can I?
Just bring him to me, and I can hand him down.
Beth can hand them all out, and while you're doing that, I'd say, one of the happiest moments that I've had either on this council, the previous council, was running into a DPW worker that I went to school with, that I played Little League with, and he told me, "Dag, when I got in..." And I said, "To what?" And he said, "To Ruth Griffin Apartments." He was just over the moon that he could stay and live in Portsmouth, and, you know, we got to make sure that that story is not uncommon. So thank you for all you do, Craig.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, we will move on to our next topic of conversation, public hearings and vote on ordinances and/or resolution. The first is, first reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Commission and Authorities, Section 1.412, Public Art Review Committee. A weight-of-sample motion moved to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the November 14, 2022, City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We did speak to this at the last council meeting. Councillor Cook, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just noting that this is the first of two ordinances that are related to public art that we're looking at tonight, and this particular ordinance is new. So this is the new ordinance that would establish a Public Art Review Committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the Governance, the Governance Committee had a pretty thorough discussion, so I'm happy to answer questions on that, and our deputy city manager, Suzanne Woodland, is here as well to answer questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Councillor Cook. Councillor Tabor?
Councillor Cook's, given the play-by-play, I'll just add some color commentary.
Fitting for the Public Art Review Committee.
This is really replacing what Artspeak did in the past, and as you know, we have the 1% for art in public buildings. There needs to be a body and a process to create the art that goes with that program, and there's a need for a body that can review public art whenever it's put into the city. And it has to be people who have the aesthetic sensibility and judgment to deal with that. So that's really what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Councillor Tabor. All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Next up is the first reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 1, Article 17, Funding of Public Art, Section 1.1704, exemption in Section 1.1707, funding accepted, and then we will wait a sample motion moved to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the November 14, 2022, City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing, oh, Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, again. Again, this is that second ordinance, and this is our existing ordinance with regard to public art. So there are some minor changes here to this ordinance. One of the changes that you'll see tonight, I'm going to have to roll back, it was an error, I think, in the red line in Section 1.1704, where we struck Section 1.1702 and changed it to 1.1701. That should not be there. It should have remained the same, just to note. Otherwise, all the red line will be the same, and I will make that amendment at second reading.
Great. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Onto third and final readings. This is the third and final reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 10, Article 5A, Section 10.5A21B, amend map for building height standards, incentive overlay districts, Sections 10.5A21.20, building height standards, Section 10.5A21.21, and 10.5A21.22, Section 10.5A43.32, building and story heights, Section 10.1530, terms of general applicability. I'd wait a sample motion moved to pass third and final reading and adopt the ordinances as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councillor Moreau?
Just to speak to some of the comments made earlier, we did remove all civic districts, so if there is a mistake on the map, we certainly will make sure that's fixed, because what we're approving, verbiage-wise, is that none of the civic districts are part of the height changes.
So, a clarifying question and maybe a legal inquiry. If a building is marked on the map for illustrative purposes as being changed, but through the language is not being changed, which supersedes and should be looked to in a case such as that?
I would say that it would be the language that would be controlling, and if there's a way to, you know, bring them into alignment, that would be the best practice, but the language of the ordinance is going to be controlling over a map.
Okay. And then you would, I guess, do we need to, would we need to amend this for the map purposes, or?
If I can clarify, Your Honor. There was a wrong map, it was replaced at second reading, the correct map is in the packet, and that does exempt civic districts.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councillor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to belabor the points, so there's absolutely no confusion on this, as I understand it, civic districts would include places such as the Moffett Lathouse, and
Correct.
they are excluded from these requirements.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Passes third and final reading. Next up, the last one on reading of ordinances, third and final reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.414, Commissions and Authorities, a weight-of-sample motion to pass, move to pass third and final reading and adopt the ordinance as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Councillor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since, I guess, one of the things that I want to speak about to address some of the comments made tonight is, when we come up with something as a public body, we have to do it in public, so the public has a right to know and see how we deliberate and how we come to our decisions. I think that was clearly apparent several times this year, when I made overly long motions that we then had to kind of decipher in real time. And that's what's happened here. The Governance Committee brought forward an idea of how we could do things, we looked at the idea, and we made some changes. And I want to speak once again to the chair position. The reason that I made the proposal that I made at the time was, one, I wanted to keep the three highly qualified individuals on the committee and have the city benefit from their services, but, two, you know, Chairman White often refers to the GFAOa Blue Book, which, you know, I'm not overly familiar with, but I've made myself familiar with it. And the third or fourth bullet point is, all members of the Audit Committee should be members of the governing body to ensure the committee is independent- To ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness, no governing body members who exercise managerial responsibilities that fall within the scope of the audit should serve as a member of the Audit Committee. And if this Blue Book is truly the guideline, what we should have is an Audit Committee that is composed entirely of elected officials. That's my interpretation. So, not wanting to have a committee that was composed entirely of elected officials as this suggests, I thought a good compromise would be to have an elected official be the chair and to have an equal number of appointed and elected officials on the Audit Committee. So, that's how I personally got to where we are tonight, and I will be speaking in support of the changes.
Councilor Bagley? Any other comments? No? I will just say, I'll support this, there's been a lot of talk of Audit Committee being independent, and it must be independent from the city staff and the government. It's not to be independent of us. You are elected officials. We are accountable to you. I know that at times seems that you can look at politicians as something other than you, but we're not. We are the government collectively together. You're elected representatives, and you, the citizens, that have a right to speak with us, to disagree with us, to vote us all out of office. And so, the changes that were made to the Audit Committee to ensure that the elected officials, your voice on the council, had as much representation as those that we cherish, their expertise, that are willing to volunteer for service with regard to the Audit Committee. So, I will be supporting this. I thank everyone for their commitment to the discourse, and I think we've improved this immeasurably. So, with that, oh, Councilor Taber always coming in after I ask everybody if they got anything to say.
Yeah, you know, the residents elect us, and they give us the job of oversight of the city, and a major part of that job that you elected us to do is to make sure that the audit is done every year, and that's a council job. So, Councilor Bagley is correct that the best practice, according to the Government Finance Officers Association, is that it be purely elected representatives, but we value the expertise of those in the community, and this compromise balances those two interests.
Thank you, Councilor Taber. Any other comments? With that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Passes eight to one. Next up, and I'm sorry, the Fire Chief was here, and I should've called him up earlier, but we have the city managers' items which require action.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is the request for approval of an employment contract with newly appointed Assistant Fire Chief Jason Janey. The memorandum explaining the contract is in your packet, along with the draft agreement, and both Fire Chief McQuillan and Assistant Fire Chief Janey are here, as well as Fire Commissioner Dicky Gamester.
Your Honor? I motion to approve the employment contract with Assistant Fire Chief Janey.
I second.
Any discussion? We're really excited about this, and thank you, Fire Chief McQuillan and Commissioner Gamester for being here. Fire Department is an amazing asset, but it's so good because of the people that make up its ranks, so thank you so much for your willingness to serve, and I'll be excited to approve this contract. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations.
Perhaps you'd like to stay and cover for the police chief, Phil? The next up is the approval of an employment contract with Deputy Chief of Police Michael Maloney. The memorandum explaining the contract, along with the proposed employment agreement, is in your packet.
I'd wait a sample motion to approve the proposed agreement as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Well, I will say, even because he's not here, we still say great things about Mike. What an amazing person, really happy to be able to keep him in the appointment of the city, and really excited, again, for another great department to have great people willing to serve. So, all in favor of the amendment as presented? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up are the first of three requests for approval of collective bargaining agreements. The first request is for the, what we call SMA, Portsmouth Supervisory and Management Alliance. The memorandum explaining the agreement, along with the agreement itself, are in your packet, and that has received tentative agreement approval from the union. Looking for approval of the agreement as presented.
Wait a motion to move and approve the proposed agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Lombardi?
I would say that I believe the management of this city deserves the applause, too.
Well, we will certainly give it if the vote passes.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Anybody, any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? All right, thanks, guys. All right, well, now, we're gonna, we pushed it with applauding Mike there, 'cause he wasn't here. We got a lot of contracts to get through. I'd ask that we keep the applause till they're in front of us, but next up.
Item number four is approval of collective bargaining agreement with the Association of Portsmouth School Administrators, similar to the previous request. You have in your packet the memorandum explaining the agreement, along with the agreement itself, which was agreed to by the union.
Wait a sample motion to move and approve the proposed agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
The last approval of collective bargaining agreements this evening is with the Portsmouth Association of Clerical Employees, or PACE, similar to the first two. The memorandum explaining the agreement, along with the agreement itself, are in your packet, which has been tentatively agreed to by the union.
I'd wait a sample motion to approve the proposed agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much, and the other reason that Fire Chief McQuillan is sticking around is item number six, and this is a request for a public hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on November 14th to support the bonding authorization for the purchase of fire apparatus. What we normally do on our rolling stock is replace aging equipment. What is unique in this go-around is production time for the vehicle in question is now 24 months out due to multiple factors in supply and demand, and as such, the Fire Chief is requesting the borrowing authorization of up to $800,000 in order to sign a contract for the new fire engine to ensure that it will be delivered on time in July of 2024 and keep the replacement schedule on track. This will avoid any price increases, and borrowing of the funds would not take place until FY '25, which is what we've been planning for all along, and we would not make the first payment until FY '26 as scheduled and as projected in our current debt schedule. So, all we need to do is receive authorization so that we can lock down the price and have the vehicle on time.
Wait a sample motion to hold a public hearing and vote for a borrowing authorization of up to $800,000 for the purchase of a new fire apparatus on November 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Bagley and then Councilor Bowe.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a great initiative by the Fire Department to bring it forward. Recently, the mayor of Dallas more or less asks the federal government to step in in speeding up the manufacture of emergency vehicles, because they have a pretty situation, a serious situation there, where they don't have enough ambulances and enough fire trucks. The unfortunate reality is, you can't really speed up this manufacturer, because it's highly specialized. It's not like they can, you know, stop making Chevy pickups and switch it to fire trucks. There's only a few companies that do this type of manufacturing, and there's a backlog. So, I applaud the Fire Department for bringing this forward before we have an issue.
Councilor Bowe?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Fire Chief McQuillan and the Fire Department for having this foresight. Looking down the road, the last thing we would ever want to do is to not have a fire engine, so I really appreciate him looking this far, being this prepared, realizing these challenges to the supply chain these days, and, yeah, taking the necessary action.
Thank you, Councilor Bowe. Any other comments, questions? No? Look forward to taking a ride in that truck. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thanks, guys.
Up next is a request for first reading at the November 14th City Council meeting. Boy, that will be quite a meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Continuing the theme of code cleanup, as started by Planning Director Beverly Zent and taken up by the Land Use Committee, our not-so-new-anymore Chief Building Inspector Shanti Wolf has been working diligently to provide updates to our building code ordinances, which were last amended just about three years ago. In July of this year, the state adopted by reference the 2018 version of the various codes, and as such, the Inspection Department recommends drafting a new building code ordinance locally that deletes repetitive language and combines the two existing chapters that we have, which are known as Chapters 12 and 15, into one revised building code ordinance. So, we would look for a vote to schedule first reading on November 14th. We would look for Shanti to provide a presentation at the second hearing, which would be December 5th, and of note, in the middle there, the city would schedule a public information session on November 21st to walk the public through the changes and provide the draft changes on our website.
Wait a sample motion to schedule first reading of the new city building codes, Chapter 12, as rewritten for November 14th, 2022 City Council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Taber?
Yes, I just wanted to ask staff, is this a cleanup, or are we looking at additional code implementation beyond the state code? In other words, we have the ability right now to add local regulation, and we do have quite a bit of it beyond the state code. Do we foresee more of that coming in this rewrite, or is it simply cleaning up and making the code we have easier to use?
I'll punt while Shanti joins us, but the long and short of it is, there'll be a lot of cleanup language, along with a key conversation addressing the electrical portion of the code, but Shanti, please keep going.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, city attorney Morell. To answer your question, Councilor Taber, for the most part, we are cleaning up and condensing from two chapters into one, going from 55 pages to roughly 22 pages. So, we're getting rid of a lot of redundancy, articles that we've had that have been adopted initially and then revised, revised again, referencing articles of the state building code that are no longer on the same page or even numerically the same anymore. So, at this point, it really is a serious cleanup. We will not be introducing any additional regulations. We'll be offering some clarifications, a few definitions, and a couple of examples and allowances for situations that we've seen or that I've seen over the last nine months that I've been here that haven't really been addressed to allow for residents to accomplish some of the projects that they set out to do. So, all in all, with the exception of the electrical, which will be a bit more restrictive than the state code, although mostly carryforwards, articles that we already have in place, and when I say more restrictive, really, I mean, you know, offering a safer scenario for the residents and for businesses around the city, which you'll see during the, you know, the sample draft that I put forward in the next few weeks, but not additional, with the exception of the electrical.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Shanti? I was lucky enough to have a conversation with Shanti around the, I don't plan to put one of these in, but an outdoor shower. Said one of the examples is defining an outdoor rinse station, 'cause he saw rinse stations at Hampton Beach, and if they're allowed at Hampton Beach, why aren't they allowed in somebody's backyard if they wanna do that? So, you know, it's trying to get to yes, and I appreciate everything that Shanti has done and this department has done to try to get more folks, trying to get people to yes when it comes to what you wanna do on your property, and look forward to the conversation and reviewing some of those changes, especially look forward to cutting the codebook in half, if we can, you know, to 22 pages. So, thanks so much, Shanti, for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Have a good night.
Thanks, Shanti.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight, similarly, is a request for first reading at the November 14th City Council meeting for amendments to Chapter 5, the Fire Code, and joining us tonight is Deputy Fire Chief Pat Howe. The city's Fire Code ordinance last was amended in December of 19. Similarly, and in July of '22 of this year, the state adopted the state fire code, which adopts by reference several other codes, and when the state fire codes updated, the fire department typically reviews and makes housekeeping amendments. The city does not adopt any amendments to the fire code, however, it will also adopt the international fire code, and so that's what Pat Howe is seeking to do, and so similarly to what the inspections group is doing, they're going to hold a joint public information session on all of these code sections together on that date on November 21st. So, first reading for both, November 14th, public information session, November 21st, then both would come back for presentations at the December 5th council meeting.
Thank you. I'd wait a sample motion to schedule first reading of amendments to Chapter 5 for the November 14th, 2022 City Council meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whether it be tonight at first reading or at second reading, I was hoping we'd be able to get more information on what impact the elimination of the solar array provisions will have if we do indeed vote to approve the ordinance.
Given that the Deputy Fire Chief is here, I think it would be best coming from him. So, thanks, Pat, for joining.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager and council. To answer your question, we are removing our local amendment on solar. Really, we're not adding any requirements for anything. We've removed some that are now included with the updated version of the IFC, as well as the state fire code. As far as solar goes, we have, the state adopted an amendment which made it more solar-friendly, and we are actually giving solar companies a choice whether they wanna follow ours or the state's.
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you. Any other questions, deputy? No? Any other comments, questions? Nope? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. Last, under my name, Mayor, is a request for a first reading, who knew, on November 14th, for amendments to Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.408, currently titled Cable, Television, and Communications Commission, initially brought to light in 1996 and most recently amended in 2005. So, as you all know, there's been several advances in that industry, and the commission met recently and is looking to propose changes to the title and powers to broaden their responsibility beyond cable television to include such things as broadband internet services via physical transport method, including both physical cabling and over-air delivery, including cellular. So, these changes were run by the Governance Committee, and the Governance Committee supports the commission's desire to broaden their powers in this fashion. Deputy City Manager, City Attorney Suzanne Woodland is here, if you have any questions, but the idea would be to schedule first reading November 14th.
Thank you. I wait a motion to schedule first reading on these proposed changes to Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.408, at the City Council meeting of November 14th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. One request I may have of this committee, if it's appropriate, and I don't know the answer to this, is cellphone service in the city. A couple of years ago, we had a real challenge downtown. At my house, with some network providers, it's one bar, with some network providers, it's no bars. I've heard from other residents that, you know, they wish they had cellphone service at their house. Understanding that it's up to Verizon or Sprint or AT&amp;T, I guess Sprint's now T-Mobile, you know, to the service that they provide, the component that maybe we can have an effect on is making sure that our city government is friendly to them providing the service and that they don't have any regulatory obstacles, or if they do have regulatory obstacles, there's somebody that they can go to to address them. So, would this committee be the appropriate place for that? So would this committee be the appropriate place for that type of interaction or discussion to take place?
Well, we got the expert in the room, Assistant, or...
Deputy everything.
Deputy City Attorney and City Manager Suzanne Woodland.
So that's an excellent point, and it's one of the points that the Cable Commission now broadened if this council proves. It's one of the questions they wanted to ask some of the cellular providers, is there something that we could do as a municipality to help encourage more investment in the infrastructure? So they want to be part of that and help that conversation along. So they want to be both, help be the voice, to add a little more voice. It's not just, you know, individual residents or businesses or even just a government employee, so to speak, but help to maybe elevate the conversation and look for opportunities, so...
Great, thank you.
And Council Bagley? Any other questions, comments? I would just ask that when we're, we got a lot of things that are coming forth on the 14th. Those are all first readings, but if it's possible, when we think about scheduling these out, to schedule them on two consecutive council meetings, so we don't have, when they come to second reading, don't have...
A pileup.
Like eight public hearings on these. We want to make sure that they all have adequate time for the public to weigh in, and also want to make sure that we get home before 1:00 in the morning, so... All right, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. All right, so next up, we do have the consent agenda. Now, if you would like to pull anything out, we should do that now. Assistant Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to pull Letter C out of the consent agenda to be voted on separately.
Great. And now I would, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'd wait a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Assistant Mayor?
Your Honor, I will not vote on Letter C, as I am the founder of this festival that we are looking to move to downtown. We are in the process, myself, Evan Mallett, Dave Vargas, and Marie Collins, who's a PhD student at UNH, are in the process of starting 5013C for the downtown.
All right. So we would, I would await a motion then to move to refer to the City Manager with the authority to act.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in... My, never mind. All right, well, I'm excited. Council Tabor seems to be excited about it, too. But I...
Hold me back.
The, it's something that has been really successful at where it's currently located, and I think it would be a great celebration, especially with the 400th, to have it right in the downtown. So very much looking forward to this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you. All right. Next up, email correspondence. I'd wait a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a letter from Philip Miller regarding a children's theater at the community campus. I would, don't know if we have the committee for this yet. With this, is there any, is there any motion other than to place this on file?
I'd move we place it on file. You're on.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're on to council agenda. I'm up first with the CIP Subcommittee announcement. This was really designed to be a working group. I've asked Council Tabor, Council Morell, and Council Blaylock to serve on this, and it's a way to get more input. We have more CIP requests than we've ever, or at least I've ever had, going back three years, so that will be the history that I use this. But I want to make sure that there's more opportunities to communicate. I've asked that we would meet at the first, November 3rd, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, so not during the day, but in the, in the evening. And then, really, it's just, it's not a, you know, we still have the process that's governed by, you know, our rules as a council, the charter, but I want to make another opportunity, especially as we reached out for more input than ever before in different ways. We got a lot of input. Some of that input wasn't in the normal way that you typically put a CIP request, and so I think there is a learning opportunity to talk about that, to talk about why, you know, some requests would be, would be taken up and other requests would be sought through different means or are already being covered. So really, it's a desire for this council to make sure that we have more opportunity to connect at a time when most, not all, especially, you know, people with young children might not be able to make it, it's right around dinnertime, but in effort to have an additional part of the process, there's not going to be, this is, there's no other appointees, it's simply councilors creating another opportunity to have a working session on this, to involve the public and go through some of the requests that we got. So happy to answer any questions, and I do thank the councilors for agreeing to serve on this. Council Morell?
I'll just make the comment that it is a confusing process for a lot of the public, so I think this is a great opportunity, because I believe we're doing this in a discussion format. That's why there's only three of us councilors that are attending it, and this way, we can actually have a back and forth with some of the people that put in these requests, so they can understand why they might not make the CIP, whether they're already in some other thing or they're more appropriate in another line item. So it'd be a nice chance to actually have open dialogue versus just the way we normally do it. So that was the other good reason for doing it.
Yeah, well, yeah, and people sometimes wonder, well, you're so stiff up there. Why can't you talk? Well, there's rules, you know, about that, and so creating this, you know, it was similar to what we tried to do with the budget work sessions, to create a dialogue, and we'll see if it works, and hopefully it does, and there's feedback to that. Any other comments? Thank you again for serving. No action needed at the moment, but appreciate the willingness to serve. Next up, Portsmouth 400th Committee. I just, I wanted this for, we've had some presentations on, on specific parts of this, but I think that there's a lot of people that ask me, and I'm sure ask everyone, about the, about the 400th, you know, when is the parade? I'm like, well, you know, it's, there's a, you know, when is it, when is the day that you're celebrating? Well, there's a couple of days. So I just want to have a report back from the Portsmouth 400th Committee, you know, hopefully under Council Morell's name, that goes into this in more detail and to get at everybody's attention, especially since we're, you know, the November 24th meeting is, you know, it's the next meeting? 14th meeting? We're not meeting during Thanksgiving.
I'm pretty sure November 24th is actually Thanksgiving, so...
Yeah, so we're not, we'll be, not meeting on that. But appreciate that, and I'd wait a sample motion, or a motion to request a report back from the Portsmouth 400th Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion on that? Council Morell?
Just quickly, so that before we actually have a chance to report back, there is, and City Manager Canard can correct me, it's Portsmouth, P N H 400 dot org is the actual website, and there is an online calendar that is currently being generated and populated, although it's, it's a process to get it together, but there will be events pretty much throughout the year, starting New Year's Eve and ending New Year's Eve. So it will be a full year of events. I would say the bulk of the events will technically be sort of May to October, but it's not just one time, so...
Yep, I'll reiterate, it's Portsmouth N H 400 dot org, and you can sign up for regular, if not weekly, news email updates, and to date, there are 90, nine zero, approved events relating to the celebration. And in support of the effort, Mayor, in addition to the time and energy I can put into it, I'm adding to that, to that resource team, my colleague, the Assistant City Manager for Economic Development, Sean Clancy. So there'll be more eyes and ears and more resources put toward this effort.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Sean, for that. I think it's an awesome opportunity and look forward to that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I would, it's a heavy heart that I accept the resignation of Arthur Parrott from the zoning board of adjustment. Arthur has served the city for nearly 40 years, I think it was, I think it was 39 years, and it's, that's how this whole thing works. It's by citizens taking responsibility in the future of our city and wanting to put the time and effort into it. Unfortunately, Arthur needs to be at home more now, and it's, it's only because of that that he will not be serving, but I just thank him on behalf of the City Council and the City of Portsmouth for the effort that he put into making Portsmouth the city that we know and love today. Thank you, Arthur, for all of the work, and if you adhere right now, I'd be giving you a challenge coin, but you're not, so I'll bring it by your house. Council Morell?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, reiterate everything you said. I, you know, as a title attorney, I still to this day come across plans of Portsmouth that Arthur Parrott signed when he was chairman of the planning board. So his service has extended over multiple boards, and as a previous volunteer on the planning board, I, I understand the dedication and the commitment that it takes for the years that he's served, so I'd just like to express my personal heartfelt thank you. I've gotten a chance to get to know him over the years, and it's a great loss for the city.
Anyone else? Thank you, Arthur. And in the vein of serving as Arthur has, we have some appointments to be considered and then some appointments to be voted. First, appointments to be considered, no action will be taken tonight. Appointment of Stuart Shepherd to the Conservation Commission, appointment of Brian Gibb as an alternate to the Conservation Commission, appointment of Assistant Mayor Kelly to the DOT Public Advisory Committee for the Route 1 Bypass, appointment of Mary Lou McKellane to the DOT Public Advisory Committee for Route 1 Bypass, appointment of Ann Wiedman as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission, appointment of Charlie, Charles Doliak to the Task Force to Study Private-Public Historical Archive. I'm going to lump these, appointment of Kristen Peterson, Emma Stratton, Thomas Watson, and Lawrence Yurden, all to the Task Force to Study Public-Pprivate Historical Archive. Thank you for considering serving, and with any councilor, as always, please reach out to me with any questions that you have on these appointments. Next up, the appointments to be voted, we have the reappointment of Everett Eaton to the Economic Development Commission, reappointment of Tom Watson to the Economic Development Commission, appointment of Richard Candy to the Task Force to Study Public-Pprivate Historical Archives, appointment of Susan Starey to the Task Force to Study Public-Pprivate Historical Archives, appointment of Thomas Hardeman Jr. to the Task Force to Study Public-Pprivate Historical Archives, appointment of Katinka De Routier to the Board of Library Trustees, reappointment of Janika Fonseca to the Board of Library Trustees, and that is it. So I'd wait a motion to approve those appointments.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Council Bagley?
Thank you. I just, in the, in the packet, we get to see the resumes of all the people that volunteer enforcement, and it's true tonight, and it's true, you know, every night, that we vote on these appointments, but, you know, it's staggering to see the accomplishments of many of our residents.
Certainly.
I don't want to point out anybody in particular, but it certainly made me glad that my resume was not going head-to-head with some of these individuals.
It's, it's certainly, it's quite amazing, considering the time that goes into this, often thankless in terms of the work. When you, when you get on any commission, and I guess I'll speak a little bit longer because I have so many tonight, when you get on a commission, you realize there's so much more to a problem than you think. That's certainly been my experience with being on the council. You realize that there's a lot of opposing sides, and trying to weigh that, know that there's not an easy answer, and if the easy answer is the one you choose, it's, it's usually not the best one, because it's, it's left off something that required a little bit more nuance, and, you know, we can't pass the buck in Portsmouth, it literally stops with us. There's not like, comes from the national, the state level, they can talk about all these things, but we actually have to do it here. And the fact that we have so many people willing to implement the rules that we come up with, it's a testament to the care and love that they bring to the city. So thank you, everyone that has stepped up to serve, and thank you, those that have gone through it and are seeking reappointment. It means an awful lot to the city, we could not function without you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Thank you. All right. Next up, Council Tabor.
Thank you, Mayor. Last I updated you on community power was February, and we've been very busy. Right now, we're drafting an energy aggregation plan, which we'll submit to the Public Utilities Commission, and that's essentially our business plan for Portsmouth Community Power. We've got a lot of help from the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire drafting that, and we'll give you a draft, we hope, in December. And then we'll have two public hearings on that, as required by statute, in January, followed by a council vote and submission to the state regulators. The Coalition for Community Power, which will be our nonprofit, it has 21 member towns and cities right now, is really becoming a reality. They have $750,000 of seed money, they've hired Ascend Analytics to be their electricity buyer, very sophisticated buyer, to create a portfolio of contracts, and they're hoping to have a CEO and staff in place by early next year and be ready for the first wave of towns to have community power in May. And Kevin Charette of our Energy Committee is doing a terrific job as our board member on CPCNH, and given his utility background, he's been drafted into a lot of their committees and is doing a great service for us. One other thing that's coming up, the, we'll have the option to buy a lot of green power through the coalition, and our buying power in that co-op will give us the best prices for green energy, but we want to find out how much demand there is. When we had an event in June, we were surprised that 75% of the people we surveyed in a spot survey, an electronic survey that night, wanted to buy more green power. So we want to take that survey citywide and develop a menu of options, so that you can buy 50% renewable or 100% renewable if you want. We want to see what that demand is. And that, we're hoping to mail out in December, and then we're teaming up with the RYE Energy Committee to have an event November 3rd at the Portsmouth Library called Button Up, How to Reduce Your Energy Consumption This Winter. So as utility rates spike, this might be a chance to figure out some smart ways to control costs and make your house more efficient. And lastly, we're working on a logo for Portsmouth Community Power. So if any of people with artistic inclinations out there would like to help us develop a logo, maybe some tugboats with some lightning bolts, or the North Pirates with some lightning bolts.
I think you're volunteering. You've got some ideas.
We're looking for that, to give us a logo and a presence. So if you're interested in, have ideas for that, contact me or the City Manager's office.
Thank you, Council Tabor. Exciting stuff. Any questions for Council Tabor? I'll just say that it is, it's a lot of work that's going into this, and it's exciting, and, you know, the flexibility this will provide, as well as the green energy component, but... but in addition to flexibility to be able to charter our own course with this without being beholden to what the state has or has not done when it comes to both diversification of energy supplies to protect us when things like natural gas go through the roof. It's a big thing, and look forward to kicking this off or seeing what we're going to come back with. So, thank you, Counselor Taber. Counselor Moreau, you have a -- oh, this one, you got competing. We got doing banjos with Counselor Moreau and Counselor Bagley here. So have you guys figured it out?
I was going to, if the council would so let me, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, to allow Counselor Bagley to speak before me so that it sort of works more in flow and tandem.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I make a --
Aye. We have to --
We have to suspend the rules.
We have to suspend the rules for you to do anything. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay.
It may make the most sense to pull forward item one.
Okay.
And then leave item two to after-year item, just so there's not a totally different subject in between the two.
Okay, so we're going to have to do this again. We will, we're gonna, I'd wait a motion for, to suspend the rules to bring forth item one under section C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Bagley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the packet tonight, we have the Parking Traffic Safety Committee Action Sheet and Minutes of October 6, 2022. I move to accept and approve the action sheet and minutes of the October 6, 2022 Parking and Traffic Safety Committee meeting.
Second.
And to clarify, to accept these minutes would be to end the, because it's a vote that was taken as part of the minutes, it would be to end the Islington Creek parking program.
Counselor Bagley can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was to recommend to us to decide when to end it, but that they recommend for it to end at some point.
Is that, okay.
I guess there's a technical question for city staff. Is, it's currently scheduled to end on December 4th?
December 4th, correct.
So if we pass this tonight, I guess it would be up to staff to end it on December 4th, or immediately, or?
If I may, I believe the intent of Parking and Traffic Safety was to give that notice as soon as it arrived at that decision, so that the council could have time between that decision and December 4th to make any adjustments to what is the pilot. So just because the committee took a vote to end the pilot did not mean it ended it prematurely or in advance of when it is supposed to sunset, which is December 4th. I hope that helps.
Okay. It might not have helped me, but I'll try.
It's still in place.
So typically, learn this on the last council, and you learn things, then you forget them. But if the recommendation is, what was the exact wording, the recommendation was to end it in December 4th?
Just to end it.
Or just to end it? Because it's, so the recommendations are in the action sheet or the minutes. If we accept the recommendations, they occur immediately. And that, and the reason for that, as I understand, is that if they make a recommendation to like, put a stop sign in somewhere, we can do that before a ordinance is amended, or like a speed change, that we could do that before officially accepting the speed limit. So we're changing the speed limit per ordinance. So are we looking to end this by the vote of the PTS? Counselor Bagley?
I'll speak to that, Your Honor, because this did come up in the PTS discussion, if I recall correctly. And we kind of wanted to give the council the flexibility to decide when the end date would be. So as a second part of approving these minutes, there is going to be an action item, move to end the pilot program and to present the framework of the parking director as recommended by the Parking and Traffic Safety Committee. And I guess my question to the city attorney is, if I made that motion, move to the end of the pilot program as scheduled, would that kind of take care of this issue and make the intent clear?
I think that that would help. The parliamentary rule is that if you're accepting the minutes of a committee, it's the same as accepting their recommendation of the committee. So if you want to clarify the recommendation.
So would I amend my current motion, or throw my current motion and remake it, that stipulation?
So the
Motion to amend it? Did you need a motion to amend?
So here, so right now, we're voting on the motion to move to accept and approve the action sheet of the minutes of the October 6 Parking PTS Committee Meeting, which will in effect end the pilot program. And without a date given, it would seem like it would end immediately, but that could be open to interpretation. But that is, so that's the first thing that we're discussing. Then we have the action items, none of which we need. If you have, this was all kind of brought up because the last, the last council, we never voted on the, or we never got consensus on accepting the minutes of the Parking and Traffic Safety, so we split out the action items, both for clarity and also if people wanted to approve a action item, and they did not want to approve minutes of which they did not, were not present for, because we had a, that's how we extended the Middle Street bike lane. And so that's why this clarification came in. But we would not, I would be afraid that by approving the minutes, we would end up being, we would, we would end the pilot program. But that seems like you want to do in the pilot program, the parking program discussion and recommendation of the program down at the bottom there.
Mayor, if I could, because I'm also a voting member on Parking and Traffic Safety, I'm fairly certain the intent of the committee was to give the council some time before the official sunset date of December 4th to determine what they wanted. And I'll read the language in the action item, which is slightly different than what's in the agenda. It says, "Voted to recommend that council end the pilot program and to present the framework laid out by the parking director if a permanent program is implemented by the council." I think that's important language, and I do, I'll reiterate, I think the intent of PTS was to allow the pilot to play out in the event the council needed time to make a final determination. So I don't know if that does support your desire to change your motion.
I guess, Your Honor, if I might, I'll rescind my previous motion, and I will make a new motion, which is move to accept and approve the action sheets and minutes of the October 6, 2022 Parking Traffic Safety Committee meeting, with the pilot program scheduled to end on December 4th.
Second.
So, well, I don't know if we, how can we, I mean, the minutes, we can't change the minutes in this. So I don't, I guess I'm confused of why we are, I'm confused of why PTS chose to vote to end the pilot program, or recommend the program ending if it was going to end. I guess that'd be one, since it doesn't need to be voted on since it was going to end. The, so I guess I'm slightly confused about the reasoning for the PTS taking the vote. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking we could approve, we could do this in two motions, potentially, by approving the action sheet and then in a separate motion, setting an end date for the NPP. Because if the initial motion, or the Parking, Traffic and Safety doesn't set an end date officially, then as a council, we would need to do that, I would think, separately, and instead of having it in the same, commingled in the same motion to accept the minutes. Is that accurate?
I was trying to clarify what you meant, what the committee meant.
Your Honor?
Yep.
If I could speak to it, I think I might be able to address some of your concerns.
Well, I don't have concerns, but, well, I guess the, what I'm trying to figure out is what we're trying to vote on. And what we're presented with is the recommendation to end the pilot program by the Parking and Traffic Safety. There's not a specified date, but that was already going to end. And so I'm curious on what we're, what we're voting on. It was, if it was voted on to not continue after December 4th, that would be different. But it's been voted to end on December, or just vote to end. So I don't know if what we're trying to achieve can be achieved with the minutes that we have. So I would, it would be my recommendation to not vote on these minutes, or vote them down, because there's, we're not going to achieve, you know, what was to be desired by the PTS, which was not to continue the parking program and not to end the parking program. Does that, does that make sense? Counselor Bagley?
Yeah, Your Honor, it does make sense. And to shed some light on how PTS got here, as you may recall, this program has been extended numerous times. So we addressed the question as, not so much should we end it, but whether or not we should continue the program. And the consensus was that it's gone on long enough and it's time to end the pilot program. I don't think, and this is my responsibility as chair, is we didn't clarify, do we end it, you know, immediately, or do we end it over the next six weeks, so to speak? I don't think we felt that was a decision for PTS. We felt that was a decision for the council. However, I would say the temperature in the room was that, one, we definitely thought it was time to end the program, not extend it any further. And I don't think the committee particularly would like to see this issue returned to them without some serious guidance from council, because we've strayed from, let's say, issues into policy area. So the committee didn't want to overstep its authority and be making policy decisions or recommendations. We really felt the council probably has enough data from the pilot program, and that it should take that data and make a policy decision whether or not they want to have a parking program or not have a parking program.
I got it. I think I got a, I don't mean to cut you, I think I got a way forward for this. So what I would, you know, check, parliamentary inquiry, can we vote to table the minutes of the action sheet and minutes, or the action sheet and minutes of the October 6, 2022 meeting, and then take up the action items needing council approval separately?
Yes.
Okay. So I would
So you should table it to a certain date.
Yeah, let's, let's table, or I would await a motion to table Parking and Traffic Safety Committee Action Sheet and Minutes of October 6, 2022 until the number of ever 14th city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And does everybody follow what I'm trying to do here? I'm trying to get the minutes out so we can deal specifically with the action items, which include the pilot, which we could amend without amending the minutes of that? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay. So you have it. We now go through the taxi stands, Morning Street, and then to the old meat and potatoes there at the end.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to eliminate all taxi stands except for in front of the Tuscan Steakhouse.
Second.
And just to speak to this very quickly, we currently have six taxi stands in the city, three of them which are exclusively taxi stands, and three of them which are shared space with loading zones. At one time, the city had, I believe, up to 28 taxi medallions, which you would require to have to use a taxi stand. We currently have one taxi medallion. We spoke with the gentleman who owns the one taxi medallion. He said he can't use more than one at a time, so he has no problem with this. And out of all the ones that were available, he thought that was the one that's most helpful for him. We did bring to his attention that that part of Pleasant Street is often closed in the summertime. He said that's no issue. So he's happy with this being the one taxi stand. And after the meeting, I kind of thought about this, and I don't think we should put it for a vote tonight, but I would like to put the idea out there that we consider grandfathering the taxi program.
Okay. We can, I think that'd be a good thing to take up at the PTS meeting, and we'll make sure to come back. I think, you know, one taxi, it seems like we should at least look at that and the process of medallions, the taxis, and it might make sense to do something differently. But with the motion on the floor, any other comments on that? I thank PTS for looking at that. I thank the city mayor for bringing this forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to Morning Street.
I motion that Morning Street, oh, sorry, motion move to install no parking here to corner signs 30 feet from Woodbury Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, you have the neighborhood parking program.
So I move to end the pilot program as originally scheduled and to present the framework of the parking director as recommended by Parking and Traffic and Safety Committee.
Second.
Any discussion, Counselor Taber?
Well, I would just ask Counselor Bagley to clarify what you mean by present in your motion. Present to us for deliberation, or you're not asking for us to direct a policy direction here? So I just, I was unclear on what you meant by present.
I could speak to that. So we've, we've done the neighborhood pilot parking program for about a year and a half total, I think, when it gets to the end date. And we've had a lot of data. We've also had quite a few public speakers, to, for, against, indifferent. Some spoke tonight, but we've had many, many more come to our meetings or send an email. So there's been a lot of discussion in the community. And I would say it's fair to say there's no consensus. It's probably not 50-50. If I had to guess, it's probably 60-40 in favor. However, that was when the program was under, operating under the pilot rules, which was at no charge to everyone. So what the committee thought was best, since this is, you know, it's not putting up a stop sign or a speed bump, it's not a safety issue. It's a, a community want, let's say. So it's really a political decision, do we want to have a parking program? And if we want to have a parking program, what would that look like? And we thought as a committee that Director Fletcher had put some pretty valuable data together, and that it might be helpful to the council if Director Fletcher was to present the data, which he has done in the packet. We could then ask the director any questions, and then, not to steal Counselor Moreau's thunder, but I think she's going to have some, you know, thoughts on this that she's collected from the community.
Okay.
So I think the objective tonight is to say, the pilot has gone on long enough, so to speak. We have data now that we can use, and it's up to the council to probably do one of three things. One, to continue a program that is identical. Two, to create a framework for a program if this neighborhood or another neighbor in the city wanted to have such a program. Or three, to say we're not interested in neighborhood parking programs and place the data on file.
Okay, thanks. That's great. So we're essentially voting to end the pilot program and then hear a presentation, or hear the data.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess the word end, you know, this is not just, because thinking about what's going to be in the paper tomorrow, I'm more thinking like, you know, what the action of this is to, is to, is to do. And that action from PTS, as I understand it, is that they no longer want to run a pilot program, that they've collected as much data as they will collect. And so they're shifting the buck back to where it's got to stop, and that's us, in terms of making a decision. So I'm fine with the, you know, move to end the pilot program as regularly scheduled. I might have changed it to, you know, not renew the pilot program. But that, ultimately, it's our call, once we've stated that we're no longer in the pilot phase. So we've moved on to, if we're going to do something, we got the data, let's do something, or not do something, but it's our call now. That's how I understand the intent of that motion and the will of PTS, as shared by Counselor Bagley.
I would agree that that is a very accurate representation of the PTS's feelings.
Okay. So any other discussion? Again, I Okay. So, any other discussion? Again, I think we're going to, we will have discussion on how we would, so this is not a vote if you, if you don't want or do want a pilot program. It's a vote to say that the pilot program, whether or not you want a neighborhood parking program or not, has to come to an end, and we are going to end that, that pilot program when it was scheduled to do by December 4. Okay. All in favor? Or I'll do a roll call vote. Roll call, Kelly, if you can.
Yes, Mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylot?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCacken?
Yes.
unanimous.
Okay. Now, we're going back to Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct? Because then we'll come back to Rule 3 of 43. Okay.
Thank you, thank you. So, I actually attended the last Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee because I knew this was going to be discussed. And as everyone on this Council knows, I live within the NPP program. I have many neighbors and have been in the neighborhood for 20 years. There are, yes, a few people that are adamantly against it. I think that there are some parameters, and we've discussed this, like what to look at. We've been looking at other cities. I know as a planning board member for many years, parking is always, as we all know, top of everyone's discussion list. So, I think for publicity's sake, we really need to look at a parking management program, especially for the neighborhoods that abut the downtown. Because we all know that the more downtown parking gets expensive or gets overrun, that it all bleeds out into the adjoining neighborhoods. And for that reason, I think we really need to look at a framework that'll work for possibly all neighborhoods, as far as how you evaluate it and possibly implement it. It might be unique to certain ones. So, I thought, you know, we have been the pilot program, so now let's take the data that we have from the pilot program, let's take the experience that we have, and try to start to work with what a parking management program for a neighborhood would look like in our city. And, and the neighborhoods that abut downtown mostly are mixed-use. There are some businesses, but a fair amount of residents, and, and a little bit of in-between. So, in looking at the data that Director Fletcher brought forward, we looked at that, and we thought that some of the points were great. I think that some of the data that we've been given could be argued. So, part of my wanting to have a discussion with all of you tonight was to get your feedback about some of the points that we came up with. So, we talk about, you know, how many parking spaces did it open? But what we don't talk about is who were the people that were parked there before, and who were the people that were parked there after it started? So, you might have had Sir, you know, whatever the, you know, it opened up one to two, three spaces. Well, it might have actually opened up 10 to 15 spaces, because now, instead of having others parked there, you know, some of the people from the neighborhood are actually able to park there. So, that's actually a number we can't really figure out, because it's not a way, you don't have a way to actually figure that number out. So, I just think that there are some ways to look at these numbers that works, and some that, you know, you could question may or may not be applicable. Also, when you're looking at their percentage of like 85%, I mean, that's a, that's a utilization they do for commercial places, so like the downtown, right? You want a certain percentage in order to make sure everything's properly utilized. I think we have to look at different percentages if we're talking about actual neighborhood programs, because I think that parking management would be a little bit different. And I'm no expert, but I certainly lived long enough in this neighborhood to know what the issues can be and what the issues are. So, as a group, a small group of the neighbors, we, we worked on, and I enjoy feedback, we worked on some parameters, we worked on some rules, and we worked on some fees. And we thought residential permits at $10 a month seemed to be a fairly reasonable amount to ask somebody who lived in the neighborhood. And we thought of giving one free guest pass to each person that has a resident, each household that has a residential permit, and not to put a limit on how many permits. So, if people wanted more than one, they could have more than one, as long as they were residential. We thought on the commercial properties, they could get the same dollar value, but up to three permits. And then beyond that, we'd go to $50 a month with no guest passes. And the reason for the 50 is that equates it exactly to what you would pay an employee to park at the Foundry Garage. So, we figured we really needed to, after a certain amount, encourage them to actually go use the garage, or pay at least the same amount if they were going to use the neighborhood. Some of the parameters that we looked at for our specific neighborhood were basically the, the streets would be bounded by the north side of Islington, the west of Bridge Street, including Dover Street East, south of North Mill Pond. We were looking at program requirements of like 65% of dwelling units in the neighborhood to approve a program. Dwelling units consisting of single-family homes, condominiums, multi-unit buildings of four units or less. And we were looking at utilization of a program of approximately like 70%, and a program to include at least 100 properties, so that you are talking about areas that are at least of a decent size. I think our area has over 200 if we, when it was counted out originally, when I look back at the original data. And, let's see, we, some of the rules, we, we looked at permits could not be issued or renewed for any person, because they'd have to be renewed on an annual basis. Or we could do a quarterly basis. We talked about that as well, for renters that might not all end or start on the same time. We had talked about if you have any outstanding parking violations, you're not able to get a permit. You would need a valid registration for the permit. You would have, that would have to be to the residential address. Let's see. Anything, anyone that was on an unregistered vehicle could be revoked, and no refund would be issued. You know, we've looked at, permit holders must provide a name, address, a contact number, and a driver's license and proof of residency. Some of the things that have already been done or in place could be used. Permits are non-refundable, and anything, and, you know, and put in some language, here's the attorney me, "Any permit or any part thereof that is altered or falsified shall be revoked. No refund issued." So, in case of business entities with multiple permits, the revocation is not limited to a permit in question. All issued permits subject to revocation, no refunds. So, we started to put together this framework, but I didn't want to just bring something together. I was hoping now to get feedback from all of you, based off of what Parking, Traffic, and Safety has looked at, based off of what I've brought forward. Feedback. What do you think?
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I want to jump back into it. After you get back to Counsel, PTS, you want to get back into it?
Well, I, I appreciate Counselor Moreau bringing all of this forward. As mentioned, I believe she's the only Counselor that lives in this neighborhood. So, she has a, let's call it firsthand view of it. It's probably also worth noting, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but you have plenty of off-street parking at your particular residence.
I do. I don't actually need the program anymore.
So, I don't think she's doing this for her own personal benefit, let's say. What we probably have to do is, so I, I've done a ton of research on neighborhood parking programs. And, and basically, speaking very roughly, most of them were created in the late 70s and early 80s, all throughout the country and, and actually worldwide. And they come in 1,000 different flavors, let's say. And for the most part, they've really never been amended or changed, because it's so much of a political hot potato, that it's better to just stay with what you got than to, to make any necessary adjustments. So, personally, I'm probably not in favor of neighborhood parking programs. However, having heard all the speakers and done all the research, I do see that there can be a time when they're, they make sense. However, I feel that they need to follow some criteria. One, they, they need to be self-funded. Two, they need to be fair and equitable. And three, they have to be as simple as possible. We don't want to end up in a situation where we have 50 street signs on every block telling you when and where you can park and how you can park. We want to, you know, do this with as little impact as possible. So, what I would propose potentially tonight, we could schedule a work session on neighborhood parking programs using Counselor Moreau and Director Fletcher, some combination of, of those two data sets, and come up with a framework, if you will. Counselor Moreau used $10 a month. I believe Director Fletcher recommended $125 a year. I think we can compromise and, and just go with $10 a month. And, you know, let's, because, because when the parking program was free, I, I think it was easy to get people to sign up. If we're going to charge for it, which I think we need to, because it has to be paid for somehow, it would be very interesting to see what the community has to say. And I think the, the thorniest issue between what Counselor Moreau said and, and what Director Fletcher laid out is where is that engagement point? How many people in the neighborhood, percentage-wise, have to agree to sign up for this? And, and this is a really tricky point, because if, if we say it's 60% or 70%, that means 40% or 30% of the people in that neighborhood are going to have to be part of this program, even though they don't want to. So, I think that's the hardest part about this, is figuring out what is the, the right percentage of buy-in that we need in a neighborhood. Because I think we all know that logic will tell us that it has to be over 50%. And logic would also tell us that it's highly unlikely we would ever get 100%. So, what is that number that is fair and equitable, and, and would allow for a program like this to move forward? And one of the most compelling arguments for having a program like this that I heard was affordable housing. So, repeatedly, we heard about the micro-apartments at Stady. We had a, an opportunity for micro-apartments at 93 Pleasant Street, but that was denied for a number of reasons, but parking being one of them. And it was switched to, from housing to office space, which doesn't require off-street parking. If we want to encourage smaller, affordable parking, apartments that maybe don't have the parking requirements that we currently have, one possible way to accomplish that is to have neighborhood parking programs, because that will kind of protect, and I don't want to call it a right, because that's not what it is, the streets don't, uh, don't belong to anybody. They belong to all of us in the city. But it would protect historical parking norms in neighborhoods that abut the downtown. So, it's, it's a much more complex issue than I thought when I first looked into this. I think we have a, a lot of great data that the city collected for us, and I think we can have a robust discussion on a framework of what makes sense. But I think the best way to do that potentially is a work session.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I thank Counselor Moreau for the extensive work that she's done discussing this issue with her neighbors. And I think that it's really important to note that, that data isn't always reflective of the reality. There are always factors that play into data, that she so rightly pointed out. I also thank Counselor Bagley for suggesting a work session. I think this is a much bigger discussion that the Council has to have. And, and the discussion has to go beyond just whether or not we have a program in this particular neighborhood. But it does have to stretch to, what is the point of having a parking program? Where is the impingement? What is the problem we're trying to solve? And if the problem we're trying to solve is downtown parking infringing upon neighborhoods, then this clearly is not the only neighborhood that has that challenge. And we shouldn't necessarily be defining a program by specific neighborhoods. Point in fact, this neighborhood stretches a long distance, and one end of the neighborhood doesn't have the same challenges as the other. So, not all members of this neighborhood are impacted by parking challenges from pressures from downtown. And I think that's very important to note, and, and we need to have that discussion as well. Who actually should be included in this? Is it individual neighborhoods? Is it distance from the downtown? And I think that that's what requires a lot more discussion here. So, I would agree that a work session would be important for this Council to have, to discuss this.
Counselor Tabor?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Moreau and, and Counselor Bagley. It does seem like we are moving forward. I think it sounds like we don't want to continue the free pilot program forever. We want to sunset that. And the question is, what do we put in its place? And the issues we've identified are, what percent of the neighborhood has to want to participate to make this the right thing for the whole neighborhood? And how do we make this portable to other neighborhoods? I think a work session makes sense. I was going to suggest, you know, we suspend the rules and meet as a committee of the whole to deliberate, but that might keep us here quite late. So, you know, to me, we should, we should charge the cost of this. And it takes a lot of manpower to enforce a two-hour limit. Or, in this case, we're going to, Ben Fletcher suggests automating it, which gets, gets it much more streamlined, but it still takes manpower. My concern has always been, let's say that less than 50% in the end of the day want to pay $125 a year. Then you've got a situation where a majority of the residents are going to have to have their parking metered, because a minority of the residents want to have a parking permit program. And as, as Counselor Bagley points out, even if you do 65, 35, that's still 35% of the people who will have to pay for a permit on top of their taxes that they don't really want. So, I think we have to proceed carefully. To me, we should, had it come to the fee committee, I would have suggested we set the price at $125. If we get above 50%, we move ahead. If we get below 50%, we don't move ahead. And, but I think Counselor Moreau's on the right track of, there are other neighborhoods that wouldn't want to do this. We may want to do it as a way to allow housing density to grow. And so, let's, we should talk at length, at length about what's the threshold as a percent of a neighborhood? And, and do we implement the way Director Fletcher suggests, simply using the app, which seems to be very streamlined and efficient?
Thank you, Your Honor. A quick comment, and then a question for a work session, if it's set. The comment is on, I believe it was the 2018 to 2020 Council, which set the 75% threshold for the pilot program to begin. And that was incredibly controversial and tough for the neighborhood to actually accomplish. And so, I do like the idea of lowering it. Obviously, more than 50%, so the 65% makes good sense. But the question I'd have for the work session is, would it remain open to anyone in the city to buy into it to park there, or would it just be for the neighborhood? But again, that's a question for the work session.
So, seems like we need a date for this work session before December 4. Is that correct? Is that a correct assumption here? Or Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, there are two ways to look at this. One, we would want to seamlessly transition into a neighborhood parking program. There's a second way to look at this. Because of COVID, and because the neighborhood has been, let's say, unusual parking characteristics for so long, that if there was a period where there was no neighborhood parking program, it would give a chance for residents to reacquaint themselves with what the parking situation was before the neighborhood parking program. It would give new residents also a chance to reacquaint themselves, kind of the pros and cons of, we had the program, now we don't have the program. It's been, say, six months. Let's evaluate if we want to pay a fee and have the program come back, or if we're happy with the current parking situation. So, I, I guess I could see, there's a case to be made that we should have a seamless transition to a parking program, if that's what we're going to do. But I think there's an equally valid case to be made that it might be nice to have the opportunity for the neighborhood to see what it's like without a parking program for a little bit.
Okay. I guess deceive- I guess to see those both options and debate those both options would require at least the first work session. And I am super optimistic to think that we're going to, after whatever, five years, we're going to figure it all out in one night, some Rochambeau and Conference Reme, and get it done. But I would hope that we could have at least the first conversation around this, regardless of whether or not we decide to move forward or not, before the parking program is officially ended. Because otherwise, it kind of seems like we took the vote to allow it to expire and then did nothing for that. And I could see where people might want to share their opinion on that before we do. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I share your concern. I'm also concerned about not having the discussion before December 4th, because we might incur costs to the city by having to do sign removal as of December 4th. And if we are planning to extend anything beyond that, it would be better not to have to remove signs and then put them back.
So can we, I don't know if we, all of the schedules are up right now, but we could poll the council tomorrow and publicly notice the work session to be held at some point in November, I would say would be. So could we have a motion to schedule a work session at a date in November?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I will support this. I think the, I wonder sometimes why we can't meter it and then allow people to buy in on the meter, you know, just because I, the problem for me in this conversation is, you know, I definitely hear the folks that say, hey, it's not worth it, you know, I don't want this, not in my neighborhood. And I appreciate that, but I can't just listen, I don't think we can just listen to you, because I do take Counselor Bagley's point, and it's a point that I've made before myself, that parking and housing are inextricably linked when it comes to the enjoyment that people have with their current housing. And one of the biggest oppositions to more housing is more parking and more cars. And we aren't going to get things done in the city by asking people to sacrifice their way of life, or our future way of life, for more people. We have to figure out, how do we bridge that gap so that we can make a transition? We were a city that transitioned to cars and figured all of that out. I'd like to believe that we're a city that can go back to less cars there, or at least adequately account for the cost of owning a car in the downtown. So I look forward to the work session. I hope we can figure it out, not for the Islington Creek, although I do hope we can do that, but to create an opportunity to have something for the entirety, or it could be applied to the entirety of Portsmouth, because we will have these problems everywhere in Portsmouth, so long as that we want to continue to have, you know, more neighbors, continue to have our children be able to stay in the city without necessarily, you know, sacrificing what we all love about it. And that's, you know, being able to live, you know, as we're accustomed to do so. So with that, we can, I guess it's just a work session. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, guys. All right. We thought we were moving off of Counselor Bagley. You were wrong. Go back to Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm not going to make a motion tonight, but I did want to highlight, if I can get to it, public comment, and for several reasons. The first being, if you go to Rule 43, public comment session, part of our rules are, all speakers must register in person, not electronically or telephonically, with a city clerk prior to the city council meeting. I think we can all agree that that rule is certainly outdated and should either be stricken or changed. It'd be quite silly for us to allow people to speak remotely on Zoom, but force them to drive down to City Hall before they speak remotely, kind of counteracts, you know, the intent of letting them speak remotely. So that's the first thing. But the second thing, and I think, and I thank the mayor for his comments earlier before we spoke tonight, is in the state of New Hampshire, there's no requirement to have public comment at city council meetings, unless it's a public hearing, which typically has to do with zoning, then there's some legal requirements. But this opportunity to come and address the council for three minutes at the start of the meeting is not a right. It's a, I guess it was Assistant Mayor Jim Splain that first brought it forward decades ago. That being said, I would say, certainly speaking for myself, but probably speaking for others, that it's become almost akin to a right. I think this council's made it quite clear that we want to hear from the residents, we want to get feedback from the residents, we want to get input from the residents. And if you take a look at the history of the First Amendment, originally, it only had to do with what Congress enacted or didn't enact. And it wasn't until about 1917, when the Supreme Court looked at the right to due process, that's in, I believe, the Fourth and Seventeenth Amendments, and started expanding it. And interestingly enough, in the New Hampshire Constitution, there's a right for newspapers, and it was supposed to say, and for free speech. But it wasn't until the 1950s, I believe, that we went back and amended it, because somehow it got overlooked. So the right to free speech in New Hampshire, on the New Hampshire constitutional level, is relatively recent. But it is a right. And so what happens is, once you've created the ability for the public to speak at a meeting, you can regulate certain things. You can regulate the time that they speak. You can regulate the fact that when we have public comment, it is one way. And by that, what I mean is, when the public is speaking to us, and this frustrates new speakers a lot, we generally try not to respond, because it's a very slippery slope. If we shake our heads, or raise our hands, or really interact in any way on one question, then we have to on all questions. And to be frank, sometimes people come up here and they speak about things that either we have no knowledge of, or we wouldn't even know how to respond, because they're outside of our areas of expertise. So the best practice is, is that when people speak in public comment, they're spoken, they speak, we don't respond, the person running the meeting thanks them for their comments, whether they agree with them or not, and then we move on to the next speaker. So all that being said, I think the mayor captured the primary reason I wanted to bring this forward. And that's, just because we can say anything that we want to, doesn't mean that we have to. And I think for a reasonable person to come up here and to, you know, say they don't agree with the mayor, or say they don't agree with me as a counselor, you know, obviously, I don't like to hear that, but I appreciate it. What we can't regulate is when they attack a city employee, or a city resident, or frequently, former President Obama's purchase of real estate in Martha's Vineyard has been a big There are three minutes, they can more or less talk about anything they want. We can ask them to respectfully honor the chamber and keep their topics relevant to Portsmouth, and to keep them less personal and more issue-oriented. But the reality is, is there's not much we can do. So I guess what I'd like to see us do is revise Rule 43 to allow for remote speaking, codify that, and to express what our desires as a council are for people when they address the council and speak to the council, but certainly not to limit those expressions and what they say. So that was a bit long-winded, but I've put a lot of time and research into this, and I think it's, it's a tricky issue. But if we allow people to come up and speak, and they just are very insulting to residents, to citizens, to employees of the city, that's not fostering a healthy environment. And I don't think we ever want to get to the point where we don't have public comment at meetings anymore. But I do think we want to, and maybe we could do this, we could start public comment, as the mayor did tonight, with a quick outline of the rules for people that maybe it's their first time speaking, and also a gentle reminder to people that, you know, in politics, our tempers get pretty heated. But if we can stick to the issues instead of the personalities, we're all better off for it.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Any other discussion on this topic? Counselor Tabor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Here's some things I think we should value about public comment. We have a lot of interests, moneyed interests, that can hire people, former mayors, for example, to lobby us. They can hire attorneys to speak for them. Public comment, any person in this city can come up and have equal standing as those owners of capital, if you want to call them that. And I think years ago, Mayor Sorrell, I think, said the rule of 10. If 10 people come to speak on an issue, then you know it's got to be reconsidered, or thought about carefully. At the time I heard that, I said, that's crazy. That's not a real valid sample at all. But if it's 10 people whose life experience is directly affected by an issue, we're hearing from their point of view of how they live with that decision. And that, I think, is really valuable. Past councils have tried to limit public comment, or change it, and I think they've reaped the consequences of that. It is an institution. So I think we should continue it. I think we should modify it for the electronic age. I don't think we should try to encumber it with too many rules, because we can't. And I think we should expect criticism. If we're not getting criticized, we're not doing enough. You know? It's easy to not be criticized. You don't make any decisions, you don't stick your neck out, you don't do anything, you don't stand for anything. Well, I don't think that's what this council wants to do. And everything we do will affect some party. And we need them to come speak of their lived experience and hear that. And lastly, on the difference between us and city employees, you know, the test for libel, which is really, what are the limits of free speech? For us as public figures, for somebody to libel us, they have to knowingly and maliciously make false statements. That's a very high bar. But, you know, the rest is fair game. And we know that when we run for office. We're not going to, we're not going to get bouquets thrown at our feet all the time at all. So, but city staff is different. They're not public figures. So I think speakers who want to criticize city staff, they have to understand that these are people doing, serving the public as their job, and they don't run for office. They don't have to meet this high test for criticism. In fact, no one should ever, I think, criticize our city employees if they don't know their facts, because that is libel. And that's, we can't permit that. So.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. Counselor Moreau.
I'd just like to reiterate Counselor Tabor's thoughts regarding us as city councilors, that we, you know, as my husband likes to remind me all the time, you asked for that job.
Funny, my wife says the same thing.
I get that all the time, when I want to say something, but you asked for it, which is all fine. And you want to criticize me? I mean, our bosses are the citizens of the city, so they can criticize us. But when it comes to the employees, they absolutely can't criticize them publicly. They are, if there's an employee that's doing something wrong, I know that their superior or the city manager would want to know about it right away. In which case, you know, that's the direction that they, as a citizen should go, is to actually look for the person that's in charge of that person. And if that person is the city manager, then they can come to us. And they don't need to come to us, you know, publicly, they can come to us individually, it doesn't matter. But that's the direction. If you're going to publicly criticize people, it should just be the councilors of this chamber. But that's just my thoughts.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with what has been said so far. I want to reiterate something that Councilor Moreau just said, and I think this is really important. The council has no authority over decisions with regard to employees of the city, except for the city manager. So we hire the city manager, we're responsible for the city manager. If there are problems with employees, or perceived problems, that discussion should be between a resident and the city manager. It shouldn't come before the council. The council has no authority to take any action regarding a city employee. And when you come to public comment in front of the council, we're happy to take criticism. I think it's really important, I especially like to hear the criticism, because then I learn. I learn from our residents, I learn what is important to them. But we shouldn't be criticizing employees in this chamber. It is libelous to do so. I think it's critical to remember what the purpose is of public comment, and it's to bring issues before the council, on matters that the council can actually take action.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. I appreciate Counselor Bagley bringing this to the attention. I had honestly, I thought that public comment was, you know, that literally started 400 years ago, you know? I was surprised to find that Counselor, at the time, then later Assistant Mayor Splain, Jim Splain, was the one to bring it forth about 17 or so years ago, at least according to former city attorney Bob Solven. You know, I caution against making too many rules on, you know, trying to direct the type of speech that we receive, mostly because it's tough to make rules. It's really tough. It's tough to, like, limit things and not account for things, as evident by the fact that we now have Zoom communication, and a pandemic has created the ability to call in from the future here, and be a member of public comment, which is incredibly important, because not everybody can come down and have public comment when we, you know, they might be putting their kids to bed, but we still want to hear from them. So I also want to, you know, there are rules of which, if it's a council, we could agree that somebody has lost the privilege to have that. And I would take a vote of the council in a supermajority, and not place that on me. I certainly would not want that responsibility. I do have the right to remove anybody that's disrupting a meeting. But we, I think, will be well to align towards more comment and not less, to remind folks that the city employees do not work for them. They work through the council for the city, but they work for our city manager here in Conard, and she doesn't get to weigh in, because public comment, I have the gavel. But I think I would speak for her and say, if there's a problem with the city, it should be addressed to us on the dais, and not folks watching at home. And I think that, as long as we can keep it to that, I feel like, you know, the modifications that we need to make, we can review those to come in line with the 21st century, and look towards, you know, recommitting to make sure public dialogue is respected. And I just will say that there's been many times, people that I don't necessarily always agree with, have made points that I have reflected upon. And those points are often more effective when they come from a standpoint of, hey, you should consider this, not, you know, but that's just effective communication. We're always listening up here, and I think we've made many attempts to change things based on things that we've heard from comment, or delayed votes, or... based on things that we've heard from comments or delayed votes or gone back to tabling second readings, et cetera. But I appreciate this discussion, and thank you again, Council Bagley. I'm glad there's something we can, we've got to formally recognize it as Assistant Mayor's gift to Portsmouth in some way for the work that Jim Splain done. He's always tried to get, well, even the playing field for the resident and those that have had more opportunity to communicate, as Council Tabor said. So thank you, Assistant Mayor, if you're watching, or former Assistant Mayor, if you're watching at home. So with that, we go to Council Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items under my name, but technically, they're really the same item. It's two different policies, you'll see, but they really should be presented together, and you'll understand why. The first policy, 2014-2, is our policy regarding public art. And this came forward from Governance Committee, the recommendation to delete this policy. But it's not a standalone deletion. That policy goes into the second policy that we're looking at tonight, which is 2000, which would be a new policy from 2009-06. It would change to 2022- whatever if we adopt it. And we take the exact language from the first policy and insert it in the second. And the reason that Governance is recommending that we do that is we have two different public art policies. Currently, we have a policy regarding public art and then a public art acquisition policy. By combining the two, it's much more efficient. It's easier for people to find one policy than finding two, and really, they're relevant to each other. So Governance Committee recommends that we delete the first policy, the policy regarding public art, take the language, and essentially, it would go into paragraph three of the second policy. And the second policy would have additional amendments. Those amendments would be related to removing language around referrals to art speak, which no longer exists for public art, and establishing a standing committee for public art review, which we saw earlier when Governance presented the Public Art Review Committee draft ordinance to the council. So that would be the standing committee that's referenced here. And then the references to art speak are removed later as well in the second policy, and it's just referred to as "the committee." There are two other clarifications in the change, and the first one is removing the word "must" and making it "shall," include a cash donation. That change is to allow a little more wiggle room for the council, not a lot, because art donations should come with 10% of the cost of the artwork from maintenance. This would allow the council to have enough room without suspending a policy to accept, say, a donation from a very famous artist wanting to donate a public sculpture to the city of Portsmouth, or another donation that somebody else may want to donate maintenance cost for. And then, under suitable donations, as far as, that's paragraph, well, I guess it was the paragraph seven, suitable donations will be accepted unconditionally. You'll see at the very bottom of that paragraph, there's an additional language on removal and allowing us to remove deteriorated pieces of art, not just for repair or conservation or for, but for, or for other good cause. So those are the changes in the second policy. I'm not making a motion immediately to take any action here. I wanted to get the sense from the council first on how we should proceed. I believe that these changes can occur without adoption of the ordinance, but I don't want to prejudge whether or not the council's adopting the ordinance. So I'm happy to either discuss these changes occurring tonight or having them introduced to come with third and final reading of the ordinance changes as well.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so. So either we could do this as a cleanup to some things separate than the ordinance changes that are on the books, or just lump them into the ordinance changes that are already scheduled for second reading now, correct?
Right. They wouldn't have to be discussed because they're not ordinance changes. They don't have to go through second reading. But we could bring back the policy changes at the same time as third reading, so that everything is adopted at the same time, if that's the preference of the council.
I think if, the only preference that I have is if we could just make, ask for one sample motion, that would be to move to delete City Council Policy 2014-02 regarding public art and adopt City Council Policy 2022-2 regarding public art referral and art acquisition policy. Just have one motion. I don't.
Is that reasonable? Okay.
I think you want someone to say so.
Yeah, yes, so moved. Second. Any discussion on that? I don't see any issue that we would add to this. Council Boylock?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Council Cook. I think this all is cleanup. I think this all prevents, you know, us missing little steps. I like the idea of the shall instead of the must, but I think this is all just going to encourage more art.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Council Cook.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of grants to donations. Acceptance of donation to cemeteries from Valerie Cunningham in memory of Esther Whipple Moenall. Sample motion, move to approve and, or wait a motion to approve and accept the donation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of donation to cemeteries from Karen McDonald, $150. Wait a motion to approve and accept the donation to the cemeteries.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's New Hampshire State Library Moose Plate Conservation Grant in the amount of $9,682. I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the grant from the New Hampshire State Library in the amount of $9,682.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An acceptance of donation from the Fire Department in the amount of $300. I'd accept a motion to move and approve, move to approve and accept the donation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this one's a little bit bigger. So an acceptance of a housing navigator grant in the amount of $250,000. Sample, or I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the grant as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any, and a little higher.
I've been so excited about us getting this grant. So I would just like to start by saying, for those that don't know, the Community Housing Navigator Grant was through the New Hampshire Housing and the whole New Hampshire Invest Fund, which came out of the governor's money that he set aside, which is all in there. And I'd just like to give a lot of kudos to our planning director, Beverly Zen, who spent a lot of time, because I threw this at her with a week for her to draft it up and get us this award. But I think in the end, it's going to work hand in hand. For the next two years, we will be able to hire somebody whose sole job is to work on everything housing, which is one of the big things we talked about as setting a goal. So I think this is going to be very helpful for the next two years, to have somebody that not only can help planning, but I sort of see this person as really being a help to educate the community, to reach out to the community, getting feedback for us, and really being that go-between. So I'm super excited, and thank you to our planning director for doing such an awesome job in getting us this money.
This is awesome. Thank you, Beverly. Any other comments? No? It's a great job. There's, not as surprising, but the toughest calls that you get on the council or as mayor, Assistant Mayor, I'm sure, is when people are out of housing or they're trying to navigate the system of housing, and they reach out to their government and they say, "Hey, I need, I need help." There is, you know, we have a great staff that tries to piece some of that together, but it's often, you know, helping people find legal assistance or legal aid, you know, having somebody that's not only, you know, dedicated in how do we can navigate this crisis together, but on the acute problems where somebody is in distress and needs a hand to walk them through what is, you know, finding housing and, you know, temporary housing, that's something you don't, you know, people don't get good at that, because it's sometimes a life change that is really hard to, you know, a lot is thrown at them. So I'm so excited about the big picture, but also those small conversations that we can have. So thank you, Beverly, and thank you, Council Moro. City Manager.
Yes, sir.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we got to vote.
We actually have to vote to accept it so we can hire this person.
I guess we should.
And now, thank you, Kelly, for reminding us to accept the $250,000.
Just something to get excited and talk about.
We were going to leave on the table. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City Manager, some informational items.
Three quick informational items, two of which are verbal, and the middle one, which I'll dispatch with first, which is Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, which will be held on Saturday, November 12th. There's a press release in your packet, and we're doing our best to spread the word far and wide. As promised, I always give a verbal McIntyre update at each council meeting. We are excited. We are past the 50% design stage. We have led tours of general contractors to provide cost estimating through the building. So if you've seen people out and about around the building in the last few days, that's what's going on. We expect as many as five estimates back, due back in the middle of November, which will help get to the $64 question of what will this cost to build?
I hope it's a $64 question.
That would be great.
We've had our third regular check-in, which we have every 45 days with the GSA. Had it last Friday, went well, and we're still aiming for a December council vote to approve a submission of a packet to the National Park Service. So that is the McIntyre update. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions in the council? Look forward to that meeting.
Thank you. And the third and final info item I have is, you'll recall that at a previous meeting, Mr. Peter Weeks, on behalf of the Worth Condominium Association, was looking to have a matter resolved and to make a presentation in front of the council. I'm happy to report that we've solved the matter administratively. The city and the condo association have come to an agreement for the monthly rate and hours of enforcement for those reserved spaces for the remainder of the term, which I believe is nine years. Mr. Weeks, on behalf of the condo association, does not need to make a presentation. Both parties are satisfied, and as such, that's the report back. And happy to answer any questions, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
City Manager. Anything? I have one item under miscellaneous, but I will be asking Council Denton, Council Moro, and Council Tabor to serve on the newly-formed Audit Committee. I will be asking Council Tabor to be the chair. I will accept the standing aside of Council Cook, who has put an enormous amount of time into the Audit Committee and appreciate all the work that you've done on that, and look forward to going through the RFP process and getting a report back. Council Boylock.
We're doing miscellaneous items.
Yep.
I just wanted to let everyone know, the recreational needs study input session is November 16th at the community campus at 6:00. That's November 16th. That's a Wednesday at 6:00, and we hope for a good turnout. So this is your chance to ask for any recreational needs in Portsmouth.
And just so you know, if you haven't paid attention at all, that should not preclude you from coming out, you know? This is some of the people that we want to hear from, especially that are just coming like, "Hey, there's a need study?" Yes.
The more the merrier. The more people come out, the more effective the study is.
And Council Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city manager sent out a press release on October 3rd, and I wanted to make sure that we highlighted the importance of this press release. It was to announce the awards from the Government Finance Officers Association for our finance department for the 29th year in a row, our certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I think it's really critical that we recognize just how outstanding our finance director is and her team. They also won an additional award, this is for the fifth time, outstanding achievement for popular annual financial reporting. And the reason this is only the fifth time is they didn't even start producing what we call the PAFR until 2016. So we have an outstanding finance department. I think it's really important we recognize the fantastic work they've been doing.
Thank you, Council Cook.
Oh, yeah, just a quick question is, I've had questions from several people, actually, about the Sherburne School and when the Lister Academy is completely out of there. Is there a public session about the, what's going to happen with that planned?
There needs to be, for sure. What's uncertain is the date by which the school department no longer needs the educational use of that building.
Right.
So we can, we can schedule a work session there. I thought we had, if we'd not, okay, then we should schedule a work session for that. What's tricky about, not tricky, but, so the school has to, we own the building. The school can stay there as long as they want. We can't ask the school to relinquish a building. It's their, as I understand, their intention to do so, but we would need to, we'd have a work session, and if we wanted to align to any uses of the campus that would need authorization to entry to start with, we would need to have that done pretty quickly. So if we could accept a motion, Assistant Mayor to adjourn?
I would, before we potentially set a motion to set a meeting, a work session, yes, could we maybe have a motion to get a report back from the school department and the school board on the timeline that they're looking at, proposed? My concern is that if we set a work session for potential Lister Academy, and then the school board and the school department comes back and says, "We're looking at a year and a half to two years out before full transition," and, do you know what I mean? I don't want us to get too far ahead in the mind of the community of what could go there before we've had a conversation or some dialogue with the school department, public facing for the council.
What is the last, we can certainly get that, but what was the last, what was the last vote that the school board took on this? I'm trying to remember it.
That, I believe, at the point in time when they no longer, when they no longer were planning to hold the Lister Academy at Sherburne School, that they would therefore have no further educational use for the building, but they were not comfortable giving an end date, as I recall.
So I think that, I don't know if we're going to get an end date yet, and I don't want to put the school board on the spot. I think that we should have a work session, happy to, yeah, what's, this is probably a bigger conversation than miscellaneous at the end of the night. So we wait till the 14th to decide what to do, and we will work administratively through the school department to find any information before that date. But yeah, it's probably, can't do that at 10 o'clock with the Patriots on. I don't think anybody is watching right now, or watching us. I hope, I hope nobody, I hope.
I hope nobody's watching us. I'm recording it, so.
All right. Okay. Thank you, and entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, Portsmouth.